Everyone, welcome to today's meeting of the Health Scrutiny Subcommittee. The meeting today is open to the public, so a warm welcome to all of you in attendance and any members of the public watching. My name is councillor Ruth Melsom and I'm the Chair of this Health Scrutiny Subcommittee. Before we start, Joanne will read us some housekeeping arrangements.
Please can I request that mobile telephones and other such equipment are switched to silent mode so as not to disturb the conduct of the meeting? There is no fire test planned for today. If there is an emergency evacuation, please take instruction from the council staff present. The assembly point is Tudor Square. The meeting today is open to the public and will be streamed live and for subsequent broadcast via the council's website. You should be aware that the council has a data controller under the Data Protection Act. Data collected during this webcast will be retained in accordance with the council's published policy. By entering the meeting room, you are consenting to be filmed and to the possible use of those images and sound recordings for webcasting. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Joanne. So, please can I ask that members and officers at the entertainment centre introduce themselves? So I'm going to start over this way with Laura.
Morning, everyone. My name's Laura Clayne and I'm a councillor for Woodhouse Ward.
Hello, I'm Andrew Robb-Bannister and I'm a councillor for Graves Park.
Morning, my name is councillor Mick Rooney and I'm a councillor for Woodhouse Ward.
Good morning, I'm councillor Anne Whittaker, councillor for West Echolsfield Ward.
Good morning, I'm Steve Erisson, councillor for Graves Park Ward and Deputy Chair of the Health Subcommittee.
Morning, councillor Sophie Crossdon for Beechif and Greenall Ward.
Good morning, councillor, excuse me, councillor Underardensio, councillor for Brumhill and Charrowwell and I'm here substituting for councillor Mallinson.
Morning, I'm Lucy Davis, the Chief Officer of Healthwatch Sheffield.
Joanne Cooper, Democratic Services.
Deborah Glenn, Policy and Improvement Officer.
Thank you very much, everyone. So apologies for absence this morning. We've had apologies from councillor Julie Growcutt and from councillor Toby Mallinson with councillor Argentio substituting. And I think that's all the apologies. Yep, correct. Item two on our agenda, exclusion of the public and press. There are no items today that require the exclusion of public or press. And then item three, declarations of interest. Do any members wish to declare an interest in any of the items of business on the agenda? No, thank you. Item four then, minutes of the previous meeting. I'm going to just ask members if they've had a chance to read the minutes. Going slowly so we've got a chance to just glance over them. Okay, so just taking page by page. Are there any comments? Page nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15. 14. Okay, approved as a record of the last meeting. Thank you. And then item five is public petitions, questions and statements. Do we have any public questions today? None today. Okay. And then members' questions, item six. There are no new members' questions today. Deborah's going to just comment on some previous members' questions that were submitted by councillor Mallinson, which I think is ongoing. We're still seeking a satisfactory answer on some of those, so Deborah will just explain what we're going to do with that.
Thanks, Chair. Members will recall that councillor Mallinson raised through member questions a range of equalities questions for both the ICB and the Teaching Hospitals Trust. We got partial answers to some of those questions, so we submitted them to the ICB. Councillor Mallinson, and I have to agree with him, felt that the answers hadn't been answered correctly, so... Or fully enough, should I say, not correctly. So I sent the questions again to the ICB and they were dealt with via Freedom of Information Request and we got the full answers back last week. I think there are still some gaps in the answers. And I think one of the main issues is that the individual NHS trusts within Sheffield have got their own equality schemes and their own equalities monitoring protocols. And so we felt rather than to just keep backwards and forth with the questions, not quite hitting the nail on the head, the suggestion is that we will add to the work programme for next year a dedicated meeting to equalities monitoring and we'll ask each of the four trusts to come to that meeting and present their equalities monitoring information.
Thank you, Deborah. Question, yeah.
Deborah, do we know why they were answered as a freedom of information? Because they weren't submitted as a freedom of information, were they?
No, we were just, councillor Mallinson and I, I was copied in. We just sent a notification of our Freedom of Information Request and then about a week later we got the information through as that Freedom of Information. But you are right, we didn't submit it as that.
So there's a bit of unraveling still to do on that, just to reassure councillor Mallinson in his absence that that's... It's going to be taken up still. Okay, so on to our first substantial item today, which is on continuing healthcare. So just to give a very brief background to why we're scrutinising this area, we received a report from Healthwatch Sheffield requesting that the scrutiny committee look at this area of healthcare due to a number of concerns that have been raised over time and possibly a few patterns that had emerged through that. So thank you to Lucy and Healthwatch for raising it. And today we've got Dani and Carolyn to present to us first of all. And I think we're assuming that we're starting from a fairly low bar on our understanding of how CHC works. I understand it to be quite complex. So hopefully you can inform us on that and bear with our potentially slightly basic questions. But I think our objective today is to understand really how it works and how things look from your perspective. So take it away. Thank you.
Thank you. So rather than go straight into the questions that was asked from Healthwatch, just give you an overview of what we do in CHC. So we obviously get referrals through for CHC, continuing healthcare. Sorry, using acronyms, it's an NHS thing. So for continuing healthcare and we screen those referrals. If people screen in, correct me if I'm wrong, Carolyn, we will then undertake what's known as a decision support tool. So that is an assessment of an individual's needs. Now, CHC is delivered to meet unmet needs. So outside of those that are currently delivered through generic services, though, for instance, through the sheet teaching hospitals, through acute services or through mental health. And what we do is there are a number of domains that are within the national CHC frameworks. The framework will say a number of domains. For instance, it could be breathing, confidence, behaviour, challenging behaviour that we go through. And those assessments, those individuals are based against those assessments. It's worth noting that our assessments on CHC are based on other individuals' assessments. So it could be the responsible clinician in the hospital, for instance, the GP. We're taking the views from family, carers, advocates and also the individual themselves if they have capacity. And that will then determine what eligibility they have. So you could have full CHC eligibility where health fund the entirety of the care. You could be a joint package of care, which is usually funded between ourselves and social care. Or you could be funded nursing care, so that's only delivered where you need nursing oversight in a care home facility. If FNC is not delivered through the community. Or you could be social care only, at which point you're screened out for continuing healthcare.
I think it's also important to be aware that continuing healthcare isn't based on somebody's diagnosis or condition, but it's about what their day-to-day care needs are and what support they require with those day-to-day care needs.
So in terms of picking up, I suppose, what we do, we... I'll come to what, we've done some transformation work, so I'll come to that at the end if that's okay. So in terms of continuing healthcare, if you're fully funded for continuing healthcare, you can have, our first offer, and this was brought up in the Healthwatch report, is to offer somebody what's known as a personal health budget, or we call them PHBs. So what we ask individuals if they want to be, if they want to have a personal health budget, which they can do themselves, they can be the employer themselves. If they don't want to do that, we can support them with a managed account company that can help with that. Or what the ICB will also do is provide what's known as a notional budget. So they'll want the responsibility of paying the provider to stay with the ICB. But that individual has a personalised care plan. And we do have personalised care plans across the piece, but I think if somebody wants to take their own personalised health budget, that's done through direct payments through our Sheffield City Council. That's delegated to Sheffield City Council on our behalf and they undertake that for us. And then we do an audit with the local authority every six months on those personal health budgets for those that want to be the employer direct. For the most part, though, people tend to not want the responsibility. So they will go through a managed account or go through a notional budget through the ICB. In terms of the framework, we do reviews. So somebody becomes eligible for CHC, they'll have a three-month review. Because often people are discharged potentially from hospital or from an assessment period in a care home, at which point we'll do a three-month review to determine whether their needs are still the same. And then once their package is in place, we'll then do an annual 12-month review. Or unless a provider, whether that be in the community or the care home, says there's been a change in health need, at which point we then go out, the nurse would go out and do an assessment.
Yeah, I was just going to say the three-month and the annual reviews are based around the care package and how it's meeting a person's needs. It's not about their eligibility for continuing healthcare. So we would reassess eligibility for continuing healthcare if there'd been a material change that had been identified to us about the person's needs.
So we do those reviews. I think there was a question raised in the report as well around quality oversight. So if we've got concerns about a provider, then we will do safe and well checks, whether that be with the provider in the community or whether it be in a care home. We often do those jointly with the local authority, especially for care homes perspective. We have a joint working group that we hold with the local authority in Sheffield, where we meet every Friday and we review the quality of care in care homes. The local authority have statutory responsibility from a care perspective, but we do them jointly and we do joint visits for clinical oversight. And if there's quality concerns raised, then the individual nurse case managers from the continuing healthcare team will go out and do safe and well checks. That's for adults and children.
Sorry, I didn't know whether, just to highlight that the children's framework is a separate framework.
It is.
It's different to the adult framework, but it's similar in a lot of aspects.
Yeah, so there's two frameworks, one for adults, one for children. They're similar, but they're both legal frameworks, but they are slightly different for children. The arrangements for children are, we have an arrangement with the local authority in education where we have sort of tripartite and bipartite splits. So care packages are either funded between health and social care or health, social care and education, picking up things like SEND. So that's for children. Adults were based on individuals and assessed needs. In terms of the rest of the reports, we talked about personal health budgets. There was concerns about social care input, but the local authority do have a dedicated CHC team and a team leader. So we are quite confident that the social workers do have the experience of the framework. We appreciate the framework can take a while to understand both children's and adults. They can take about six months in training to understand fully. But we have done joint training with the local authority and offered joint training and we're probably going to plan some for later on this year. But because it's a health-led framework, we will be around for advice or support as social workers need it. I think there's been some concerns around, and I'm talking specifically from a Sheffield place perspective, from a continuing healthcare perspective around staffing capacity. Being honest and candid, last year we had some difficulties around our staffing capacity. We had significant vacancies. We had a high turnover. We had some people retire. And we found it difficult to recruit despite the fact that we went out several times. But we have now, we're in a position now today that we are fully recruited. I think we've got one current vacancy in the entire Sheffield team, which is the best position we've been in for a long time. So we are in a position now to catch up on outstanding reviews. We've got a recovery plan in place from a Sheffield perspective and this goes from a wider as well, from a South Yorkshire perspective. Recovery plans in place that hopefully will be up to date with all our reviews in line with the national framework by quarter three of this year. And then we'll be in real time. Just touch on, if I touch on what we're doing around transformation, that'll help, that'll bring in how we involve people. So currently in terms of what we're doing around transformation, we have undertaken a piece of work across South Yorkshire. So I'm the Deputy Director, South Yorkshire Lead for Continuing Healthcare across Barnsley, Rotherham, Doncaster and Sheffield. And I am the Place Lead for Sheffield for CHC. So what we've done is we all aligned to the framework for children and adults, the legal frameworks. But what we found is that we didn't apply the framework in different ways. We had a different model of care, different staffing structures, different teams. We use potentially different paperwork. There is some national pro formas you can use. And we also have different digital solutions. In Sheffield particularly, the other areas all use Broadcare. In Sheffield, we use a system, a patient system called iCode. So what we wanted to do from a staffing perspective and also which is a benefit to patients and their families, is align our models across South Yorkshire, align our digital solutions and align our paperwork and use the national pro formas where we could for continuing healthcare. So we started that early, I think it was sometime last year, we started the process. And we got into working groups, this involved all the team leaders and the staff to look at what the options were around aligning our models. And what we've done is we've gone for a model that, and this is across South Yorkshire and we're just implementing it in Sheffield, with the aim of being fully implemented by the end of March. Is to have a triage desk where referrals come in. But then each, once people have been triaged, they will be allocated to a nurse and that nurse will take that individual under their caseload, right through from referral to fast track, so potentially end-of-life. Before, we had individual teams where people might be moved on to different nurses. And what we said is for continuity of care, it would be easier if we had one nurse taking somebody through their journey. And if they become end-of-life, that nurse would continue with that support. We've applied that across Sheffield and South Yorkshire and, like I said, we will be fully implemented by the first of April. The benefits are for the staff is that they have a dedicated caseload and they know those individuals. The benefits for patients and families is that you're not having handoffs between nurses. We do appreciate that we have sickness and we have annual leave. So to avoid too many involvement with the nurses, we've done what we call a buddy system. So each nurse will have a buddy that knows their caseload and vice versa. So if that individual goes on leave, the nurse can pick it up and they'll have a relationship and know the individual and their care needs going forward. In terms of, so that's from a modelling perspective. Is there anything to add to that, councillor?
Not that I can think of, no.
Okay, then we've, from a paperwork perspective, we've aligned all the paperwork across the ICB using same forms, using the pro formas that are on the national pro formas that are available from NHS England or from the Department of Health and Social Care now. And what we will do is we have slight tweaks because we've got different local authorities and we'll have some localised paperwork. And then from a digital solutions perspective, Sheffield will be moving on to the Broadcare system. So that's the patient record system from November this year. And that will mean that all CHC teams across South Yorkshire are on the same digital platform. We can all access the rest of us and it also supports cross-cover when we need to ask for mutual aid. Because hopefully when we have difficulty, we also found that when we got staffing difficulties in particular areas, we weren't supporting each other to ask for mutual aid, for staff to step in and offer support to maintain those caseloads with individuals. So now we'll be implementing that from November. In terms of future work going forward, excuse me, from April, we're going to do some work around patient engagement. We appreciate that. This has been a very internal process. Currently, we do send out a questionnaire to individuals around the impact of CHC, whether they understood the DST, whether the communications were from the nurse or the social worker appropriate. We get some of those questionnaires back. We get some back from email, some in paper form and we take the learning from that. But we recognise that we probably need to do something wider in terms of public and patient engagement. And we will be involving our patient engagement lead from the ICB going forward to do that work. And then we're also looking at market management, so what providers are available in the market to ensure that we've got bespoke packages for individuals going forward, especially in where we have gaps potentially around specialist needs around autism. It can often mean that it can take sometimes two to three months to find a package or a provider that will actually take up the continuing healthcare package, which can cause delays. So we are looking at the market management and we're going to be doing that jointly with local authorities going forward. I think I've covered everything, but I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Dani. I think I'm going to bring Lucy in first of all, just in case you've got any comments back on that as you initiated this piece of work. So we'll give Lucy a chance just to come back in. It won't be your only chance to speak, Lucy. Okay, and then I'll take Hans.
Thank you. I have got a number of specific questions, but I'm going to park those just for a moment and just make some sort of overarching comments, if that's okay. I think first of all, I just wanted to sort of focus us all back on the sort of reasons why it's really important for this issue to come for all of us in each of our roles to consider how well this is working for people of Sheffield. The people who are going to come into contact with CHC, and I know we all know this, but just to remind us, these are the people who are living with the most complex health conditions, disabilities. And for many of them, they aren't able to advocate for themselves. Some will be, but others won't be and will be relying on family, friends, carers, advocates, which not everybody may have. So that's why, I guess, we brought this subject as something which we're really aware is impacting, can impact on people's lives in a really significant way. So just to bring it back to people really, and we've all heard how complex the system is. It's beastly complex for everybody that works in it. And obviously the flip side to that is that if you're someone going through this process, trying to understand the ins and outs, the processes, the acronyms can be really, really challenging at a time in your life when you've probably got a lot of other things going on and a lot of other barriers in terms of quality of life. So that's the sort of context that I wanted to remind us of. And I also want to recognise that you guys are working in a national system and a national framework and probably you've got frustrations sometimes about how that national framework constrains or impacts on the way that you deliver the service that you deliver. I don't doubt that. And I think probably nationally, there's a lot of people that would point to a number of things about that framework or that system that could be better and that are flawed. So we recognise that and I think we're here today to think about how we can work together in all of our roles and ensure that locally we're working collaboratively to deliver the best outcomes for people. And you've described the transformation work, Dani, which seems like a really good opportunity to focus our minds on that and think about what's best practice, drawing from all the different elements of South Yorkshire where things might be working better and trying to put that into the system that we adopt. From a Healthwatch perspective, we'd really ask that when we're thinking about what makes good practice, we're doing that. There's many strands to good practice, but we'd want that patient experience lens put on that. Like, how do we know what good practice is? And for us, you know, the acid test of that is about how people might experience it, which I guess brings us to a kind of overarching kind of thought that I had when I read the paper that you've brought in response to the concerns that we've raised, which is that there does feel to me as though there's a bit of a disconnect. So absolutely, in each of the elements of the concerns that we raised, you have got things in place that address each of those elements. And I accept that it's not that, there's nothing in place to deal with each of those aspects. But nevertheless, people's experiences are still that in some instances that doesn't quite work for them. So I really welcome this opportunity as a committee to just try and get under the skin a little bit of, you know, how and why some of that disconnect is happening and what is the, you know, what is the scope really for shaping things locally in a way that just irons out as much of that as we can? We probably can't do that in the scope of this meeting today. I'm really conscious that I myself have got like 100 questions in relation to each aspect of this, so I'm going to have to try and pick and choose. But I'd really welcome the opportunity to unpick it further. Thank you, Chair.
Thanks, Lucy. Yeah, there'll just definitely be a lot more opportunity to ask questions. So don't worry, anybody, if things don't get asked today, there will be more opportunities. Steve?
Yeah, my question was specifically on the, you know, the transformation work and project work. And I'm just wondering, what, at timescale you've got in place for monitoring how that programme will progress in bringing the, you know, trying to... try and get a, a strand that works across the piece, across the whole of South Yorkshire, rather than what, from what you, you've said in your presentation appears to be very fragmented in terms of Sheffield in relation to good practice that also already exists elsewhere uh in, in some of the other districts.
So in terms of, we're all following the same practice. I probably, I probably wasn't clear. It's just probably around some of the internal processes that we have. Um I think what we've done is we've got a plan uh going forward, depending on what we're picking up. So some of it is around um market management, some of it is around contracting and commissioning. Each element of the plan will have a different time scale. Um in terms of, some of them, they're slightly more complex. So we've got a one to two year time scale on them. In terms of some of the patient engagement, that will be a lot quicker, that will probably be done. Um we've said by quarter two, quarter three. So we've got these different time scales, but the entire plan is about one to two years that we've put in place.
Just to clarify further, where are we in the one to two years at the moment?
We're just, so we've done one year already around the remodeling, uh the paperwork, that's all in place. The next element is, which is obviously slightly more complex, because you're talking about procurements potentially for market management, which take, you can, that can take up to six months uh to plan. We need to look at what the services are and obviously we need to do this. Uh we're, we're going to do some of this jointly with the local authority because we've got aligned providers of care. Um so it, we're looking at two years probably from now, from April.
Okay, thank you. Angela?
Thank you very much for um for reporting back to us. Um I have a few questions. Some of them are actually with, um I know that we're looking at it as a South Yorkshire level in terms of the transformation and in making it work for the region. But um I have a question about that uh in terms of, do we know why Sheffield used, uses a a slightly different system in terms of the operation of the processes? Um I'm asking that because obviously Sheffield is a lot more complex in terms of, you know, how many hospitals we have, et cetera, compared to our neighbours. Um the other thing is from the point of view of the patient. So I was just thinking, in terms of Sheffield, how many people are affected by this? Because that would be, some data would be useful maybe for us to see uh another time, uh just based on Sheffield, because obviously that's what we're focusing on. Um also, how efficient is it? I know that there's been problems with staffing and you've now a capacity uh bar for one place. Um how clear is the system to people? And, you know, people being either the patient, if they have capacity, or their carers. Um is the language accessible? You know, the NHS has a tendency of using abbreviations. I don't call them acronyms because they don't spell words, so they're not acronyms. Um so it's really difficult sometimes getting your head around reports from the NHS, even when you read them very often, let alone if you are, you know, just a layperson. Um and I'm asking this because in, at the local authority level, we've done a lot of work on our direct uh payments and how we, and I think I've seen a letter um that has gone out a couple of years ago. And I've had feedback from people saying, oh, thank goodness, the letter is so much clearer. So I think when you get that kind of feedback, that's when you can say, oh, we've done something good here. So I think, you know, the lived experience is really, really important because we can do lots of things thinking we're doing the right thing because we all have very good intentions. Also in terms of the team, how big is the team? How big is the triage team? Uh just to have an idea of what we're talking about, are we talking about ten people, are we talking a hundred people? Exactly. I know that the teams will be very small because if, you know, I look at the local authority, you know, we say team and then it's one person or two people. And it's also, it's important to put it in perspective so that we don't have expectations that, you know, we think there's a hundred people working on this and actually it's five or two or three or whatever. And also, very important, you said that if there are concerns raised about a provider, you do checks. But are there routine checks on providers to ensure that the quality and how often do they happen? Are they random or, you know, do, do you do repeat visits every so often, et cetera? Sorry, there's a lot of questions.
I'm trying to remember, that was good. I'm trying to remember. Um in terms of um the digital solutions, so Sheffield, this is just history. So when we were formerly CCGs, we obviously worked, we worked completely separately and obviously in isolation. Um we just chose a different system. There wasn't any, I suppose. It was, it was a system we preferred in Sheffield at the time. It's only now that we've sort of, we're one organization, so one ICB, that we think we should actually all align to Broadcare. There's no actually difference in the system. Um it'll bring a, it'll be an aligned digital solution. But so from, from that perspective, it was just history when we were formerly a CCG and it was just Sheffield Place. Um in terms of the staffing, um with business support and clinical staff, so clinical and non-clinical staff in Sheffield, our team is about fifty.
Probably a little less.
A little less than fifty?
Yeah.
Yeah, between forty and fifty staff, not all full time. Um it's made up of uh part-time and um full-time staff. And that's, that encompasses children's and adults in Sheffield, um in Sheffield Place. I'm trying to think now.
In terms of, I bet, I think you asked sort of how that works in terms of how many on desk and things like that, didn't you? So how we used to, sorry, thank you. Um how we used to work, we used to have separate teams doing sort of separate functions of the framework. Um and then the, the patients would be sort of passed on to the next team um to do sort of the next pass of it. Um and we realized that actually that isn't a good experience for patients. So the way we work now is we have the triage desk, as Dani has said. Um the nurses um cover the triage desk for a week at a time. So they, they basically rotate onto the desk for a week at a time. Um and then we have sixteen care managers that then um hold the caseloads of the patients. So they will go out, they will do that initial assessment, um and then they will keep that patient all the way through. Um at the moment, our fast track team still sits separately with a plan to bring that in in the next few months. Um and that's purely because with all of the changes happening, there's, there's time pressures in particular around fast track patients. And we didn't want to lose any of that while all the changes were happening. So we wanted the rest of the team to kind of settle into the new way of working and then bring the fast track team into that process. Um but they will be in sort of the interim process by um September. Um and then we have three nurses um that do our reviews and our um funded nursing care patients in nursing homes.
I suppose just to comment, as people down on the framework, fast tracks, they are people that are obviously near end of life. And we have to put a package of care in place within sev- did it take twenty-four?
We've got us, yeah, I, I agree the fast track within twenty-four hours.
Twenty-four hours and the packaging within seventy-two hours. So that's why at the minute, we've kept it separate, but at the end, they will all be in, it'll be one team. And each individual nurse will have a caseload of individuals. In terms of provider oversight, um we do ru- routine contracting quality monitoring with providers. I suppose it depends on the size of the provider. Um we'll get soft intelligence, which we will go out and do visits. They, we work with, with obviously our local authority colleagues who've got responsibility under the Care Act for routine visits of care homes. Um but we do those jointly and we have a, a rotation, I think they're every six, six to twelve months currently. Um in terms of community providers, you don't really have a base to go to because you have to go to the headquarters. You can't, because they're delivering care in people's homes. We'll often, um we've got dedicated contracts with the ones that health use. We have three current providers um from a delivery and supply care perspective. And we'll hold contract meetings with them, uh depending if there's any concerns, either quarterly or six monthly. Have I missed anything? Apologies.
Sorry, just the bit about the language and how accessible it is and what the feedback is. And if you haven't got any, are you looking at kind of simplifying the language so that is understandable by, you know, your average person?
Okay. Do you want to answer that?
Um the information leaflet that everybody gets sent out at the start of the process when they're referred into is, is actually a national document um by the Department of Health. Um so we can't actually change that particular document and that gets sent out sort of explaining what continuing care is to them. Um our own letters that we send out is part of the transformation work that they're becoming, they're doing. And as part of reviewing the framework, um paperwork, we're also reviewing the letters and adapting the letters to make them sort of more patient centered.
There's actually an easy read version of that leaflet as well?
There is.
I found it, I read it. It's, it's okay. Have a, have a read, Angela. If you're interested in that, have a look at the easy read and see what you think.
We have had some feedback in terms of our sort of letters and paperwork as well, in terms of um being more accessible to people um with different needs, particularly in terms of, of site. Um so we are making sure that we have easy read versions of our own documentation as well.
I suppose it's just worth noticing that when we undertake the DST as well, the Decision Support Tool, which is the assessment, the nurse will also explain
Yeah.
what is continuing healthcare and answer questions there as, as well. We don't just rely on the leaflet, we will like take them through the process at the start. And then we take the feedback from the questionnaire, which is not the best form um of uh feedback, which is why we need to explore that further. And then we will, if there's concerns, we will contact, it depends whether they've sent it anonymous, we'll contact that individual and talk things through.
Mick?
Um thank you, Chair. Uh I think, Mick, possibly you've largely answered the questions that I'm about to ask. But the thing that sort of slightly concerned me at the beginning was that when you began your presentation, you were largely concentrating on processes and frameworks. And I didn't hear a great deal until later about how there's a clinical input into the process. So I think it, it would be helpful for me if you could, uh maybe at some other stage, emphasize how often, where and when there's a clinical input into the process. I also thought, when I first read it, but you, I think you've explained it by the transformational. Uh it puzzled me how you could have four different applications or interpretations of a national framework that, and I thought, well, that was a bit odd, but you're dealing with that. I think if you've, if I've heard what you, what you've said about the transformation correctly. Uh and the other one is, um obviously, uh things, there are problems with the system. Otherwise, we won't be sat here talking about it if it was working. Do you have, is there communality amongst those involved in delivering this about where the issues are?
As if I just.
Or are you still trying to work your way through that?
Okay. In terms of um the clinical import, that's from, apologies, that's, I, I, this is where I just assume, is I'm making assumptions. Clinical input's straight away because it's the nurse that does the assessment, they are clinicians. Um it's not senior management led, it is all done by, it's triaged by clinician. Do you want to add to that?
It is. I, I guess just to be clear though, that the nurses aren't clinically responsible for the patients. So they don't do what their clinical health needs, that would be their, their GPs and things. But their clinical input is around the assessment and applying the framework to their health needs.
Yeah. And then in terms of the um application across all areas, it's not that we're applying the framework differently, we've just got a different layout of teams and a different model. And we've made the models the same in each city. So we're all following the framework because it's a legal framework, you can't really move away from it. Um but we, we agree that actually the models that we've got in each city and the number of potential handoffs from, from, from nurses to patients was not ideal, which is why we've introduced um the same model across the piece. I can't remember, apologies, what was the last question? Was it around?
We can say basically if it was working
Oh.
not, uh not properly, but without uh equal or whatever it was, surely.
Yeah.
We wouldn't be sat here now. And uh what I was asking was, is there a, uh an agreement on what the issues are? A commun- communality of uh thought about where we should be concentrating efforts to put the glitches right?
Okay. In terms of um concerns, we've not had many, our complaints have reduced significantly in CHC. In Sheffield, they have reduced. We don't get as many as we used to in the last, probably they've, they've reduced in the last twelve months.
Yeah.
Um because we've been doing a lot of work, not just around the transformation work, but a lot of work around uh making sure reviews are, are done on a timely way and that we communicate better with individuals. So actually, the number of complaints that we've had from a CHC perspective in Sheffield is significantly reduced. Um we used to get a few uh a month, but we don't, we, we don't get many now, to be honest. Um so I'm, I'm assuming that might be a reflection of whether people want to complain or not, but a reflection of, of how well it's doing. In terms of feedback from individuals, we need to focus on that. We do have the questionnaires and for the most part, it's relatively positive that we get from individuals. But we recognize that we might not be accessing everybody because not everybody wants to fill a questionnaire out. And we need to look at what other solutions are out there, especially for people that are of a younger age. The, um but in terms of the decision support tools for children's and adults, um we do, are very keen and there is an element in the decision support tool that gives the individual and the families a voice and we know, we pick that up. We take into account views around placements where we can, ensuring that if, if we can get, find a, a package or a placement that's near somebody's family home or um take into a fam- family views because they know them best. And we take that into account when we do the assessments.
Yeah.
But we do need to do some more around patient engagement.
Thank you.
Sophie?
Thank you, Chair. Um I have a couple of questions around complaints and feedback. Um first of all, I think Councillor Argenzio um nailed on the head earlier saying about um the need for data and putting it into context. So I think it'd be really helpful for the committee if we could have some data on, on complaints sent to the committee. Um what that looks like, what, you know, what people are feeding back to you specifically. And potentially looking at how that benchmarks with, with other districts in South Yorkshire. That would be, I think, quite helpful for all of us. Um overall, as part of informing the transformation, transformation plan, if you were setting the service up from scratch now, um in an ideal world, what would the process for feedback and complaints, written and verbal, look like? Um yeah, if you were starting it from scratch today, what, what, in an ideal world, how would you like that system to look?
Okay, so um I can, I can talk about, so the complaint sits out, outside of continuing healthcare. So the ICB's complaints team sits outside of uh continuing healthcare. When we get a complaint in, it will be redirected to us if it's related to CHC and we are asked to investigate it and then obviously respond. So in terms of data, I can get that, but it's not held by the continuing healthcare team. It's held by a complaints team for South Yorkshire ICB. So they could probably pull some data around, um if they think the areas that are specific to CHC. I suppose it's worth saying that in terms of what has changed before, when we previously, and this has happened over the least, last twelve months, where we have had families or individuals that have raised complaints, what we try and do is contact that individual. Some people raise them informally or they'll ring us with concerns. So it occurs from a senior ops perspective, we'll often, we'll contact those families.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll try and resolve where we can down what we call the early resolution um route. So basically, we contact the families within ten days and try and basically address their concerns and, and resolve them informally. Um if the patients and the families obviously aren't happy with um what's discussed and, and agreed through an early resolution route, then it will progress to a formal complaint, which will be fully investigated and answered through the complaints team. Um and to be fair, as Dani said, our, our complaints have gone down. I think some of the themes, particularly last year, when we had capacity issues within the team, were, were more around communication and delayed or lack of communication with, with patients and families. But um since we've filled our vacancies and got our staff into where it should be and actually with the introduction of the, the new sort of way that we're working, um that's improved that significantly and, and we are seeing a big reduction in complaints.
You, um I think there's, obviously there's quite a strong theme throughout the Healthwatch report um on this about the feedback from complaints. So I don't know whether Lucy, if you want to come in on that as well? Is that okay, Chair?
I suppose just to follow up on that, just sort of recognizing that it's great to hear that complaints have reduced and probably capacity has had a big role to play in that. But I know that um obviously there are still complaints that you do get. I'd be really interested just to now hear a little bit more about the kind of, how you've learned from, what are the main sort of um findings that have influenced the way, for example, you've approached the transformation work? What has the learning been that you, you're taking forward? And what's your process as well for learning from complaints? So on an ongoing basis in that cycle of what you're hearing and reviewing how you're working, how does that quite work? You've described how the complaints team obviously are the sort of front-facing arm that deal with the complaints, but it will come back to you as a team presumably in terms of the learning?
Yeah, so we have an identified team leader who um is responsible for investigating our complaints. And that's one of the main functions of her job. Um and she basically. And she basically collates the learning taken from and the recommendations taken from the complaints and the responses. And that's fed back through our monthly full team meetings or individually if there's individual feedback that's needed as well. And then any additional training that's been identified as a result of learning from complaints is then sort of implemented within the team.
We'll take it through, if it's individuals potentially, we'll take it through supervision. We have a monthly Sheffield CHC team meeting, which we will pick up learning from and complaints. And then I usually, if it's depending on the complaint or depending on the learning, I will usually attend team meetings or team leader meetings to feedback and we feed back to staff. But we do have the regular meetings and we do pick it up through supervision. And like Kaz says, a lot of it tends to be around, previously it was around, like you said, lack of communication because we hadn't got the staff. Or some of it will be around if there's a change in eligibility and people are no longer eligible for CHC. And obviously, we give people the right, obviously, we've got, people have the right to appeal the change in eligibility. But the themes tend to be around staffing, communication and changes in eligibility.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. Just going back to what Ruth said at the start, it's been really helpful to sort of understand it better. It's been really helpful. In terms of my question, councillor Crossthorn and Lucy have covered similar sort of things I was going to ask about complaints. But I guess I'm just mindful, some more of a comment really now, but I'm just mindful of what Lucy said at the start about how generally the people who are receiving CHC often can't advocate for themselves. And so perhaps complaints going down, being a low number, that sort of public engagement work about how you engage with people who are receiving CHC and how that input is something that maybe would be good to consider. It sounds like you're on the way to doing that, but I suppose that would be my reflection having heard what you've said today. I'd also, like councillor Crossthorn said, it should be interesting a bit more of the data and the learning from complaints, particularly the number of complaints that have gone to the ombudsman and whether the ombudsman has had any advice, if that sort of information is available. And also, do you use the informal stuff that you're doing around complaints, which sounds really positive, the learning from there, does that get recorded in a way that you can then look back over a year, for example, and see what's been happening?
Yeah, early resolution process, there is specific paperwork from the complaints team around that. So the conversation and the agreed outcomes are recorded and then they are sent to the complaints team anyway. So the complaints still have oversight of the early resolutions.
Listening to what you've told us this morning and also reading the paperwork, it certainly sounds a very complex process and a very difficult process to navigate through. And it's certainly, in the past, I've had casework from people who just found the system really difficult and have really struggled to get in the care package and things. I know you're doing a lot of transformation work and other pieces of work. So how confident are you that that's going to improve things like making it more simple and making it more speedy?
I don't think we can necessarily make the framework more simple because the framework is what the framework is. I guess it's how we help our patients to understand the framework. And I think the transformation work we're doing, I think, will significantly improve the way that we work and the way we engage with patients. And we see that from our children's team. Our children's team have actually worked in the way that we're implementing in terms of the adult team for a number of years now. And we don't rarely get any complaints in the children's team and we have really good feedback from the families. And I think it's part of that is because the caseloads are a lot smaller, so the nurses have more time to invest and actually spend with the patients and engage and help them sort of through the processes of the national framework. So by the work that we've been doing in terms of the adult team, we've increased the number of care managers that we've got. So the caseloads will be significantly reduced, so patients will get more frequent and better contact with the nurses.
Okay, so I've got a couple of questions as well. I'd like to just come back to how people are going to be involved in the transformation process. So just to dig in a little bit more on what Lucy's raised about how people should be at the heart really of the decisions that are made in transforming how the service works. So in practical terms, what does that look like in this next stage of the transformation? So if you could just recap on what's going to happen during this next stage and then just describe how people and their advocates or carers are going to be involved in that?
In terms of the detail, I don't actually have that detail at the minute. I'm meeting with Katie, who's our patient engagement, at least she sits on our QP board, about what she thinks, what the best advice is. And obviously, I was going to engage Lucy around how we are best engaging with individuals. We've got some ideas because obviously whatever we apply in Sheffield, we will apply across South Yorkshire from an ICB perspective. We're aiming to, when we finish the paperwork, we're aiming to start this work obviously in April and that is an initial meeting between myself, the team leaders, Katie and Andrew Russell, who is the Director of Nursing and he's the lead for CHC for South Yorkshire. So in terms of what the actual ask is, we need to work that out. We haven't got the detail yet, but we do know that that's the next piece as part of the transformation work.
Okay, thanks. I've got a question about decision panels. So when something comes to a panel, what's the makeup of that panel? Who sits on a panel? And is there a balance on that panel between health and social care representatives, as it were? Are there independent voices on the panels as well? Who are not employed by either the councils or the ICB, you know what I mean? And I guess I'm just curious as to how, if you're sitting on one of these panels, how you would balance out the pressure of knowing that your own organisation is in a financial squeeze? How you balance that out against working in partnership with the other organisation? And just how that really works out in practice in the decision making? Because there must be pressures, we all know there are pressures. And how does one avoid that becoming a conflict of interest, if you sort of mean, in the decision making?
Okay. So Kaz, I'll pick that up and I'll feed in.
So I guess first to differentiate between the panels. So the eligibility process and the funding process are two completely separate processes and they're dealt with by separate people, so there is no conflict of interest. So when the nurses undertake the decision support tool and make a recommendation of eligibility for a patient, it's an MDT agreement. So at that MDT would be a social worker and there would be a nurse as well as the patient and any family representatives or advocates that are there. But the nurse and the social worker form the MDT. If they agree on an eligibility recommendation, then as part of the framework, we should, unless there's exceptional circumstances, accept that eligibility recommendation. So that doesn't then go to a panel, it just goes to one of our team leaders just to verify from an ICB perspective. If there is a disagreement between the local authority and the nurse about the eligibility recommendation, then it would go to what we call our eligibility panel. On our eligibility panel is one of our team leaders and also a manager from the social work team from the local authority. So it's a joint panel and they work together to look at the decision support tool and the evidence the nurse and the social worker have collated and make a joint decision on eligibility. If they can't agree, then it gets sent to our dispute panel. And our dispute panel consists of myself and one of the senior managers from local authority as well. And it's the same process in that we would go through the evidence and the decision support tool and come to a joint recommendation of eligibility. The nurses that are part of the eligibility panels don't have any input into the funding side of it. So I would never sit or see any of the resource panels. So once the eligibility is agreed, it's at that point we then look at what the needs are of that person and what package will best suit their needs. And again, the nurses will work with the patients and the families to identify that and they would then present that to our joint resource panel. Our joint resource panel also consists of representations from the ICB and from the local authority.
And if it's children's, it will also include education. So we have different panels for children and we have different panel for adults. So and then what we do is we, there'll be representatives, again, separate representatives from the eligibility and the dispute. What they will do is care plans will be put forward from the nurses and the social workers to review. And there may be options around placements and the funding of those placements. What they do from that perspective is look at the quality and the outcomes that the providers can deliver. And then they will look at the finance. The finance always comes last, it is around the quality of outcomes. CHC is about assess need, so we can't reduce the package or in terms of funding. If that's the needs of the patient, then we would fund the needs of the patient. And then obviously, we then do the reviews, which looks at whether the needs have changed as part of that process. And on the funding panels, for adults, it's made up of social care, health, and then we have an independent nurse on there who will scrutinise from a, I suppose, from a clinical and from an outcomes perspective. It's not just all about funding, it's done independently. And that's the same for children's, but it's health, social care and education.
When you're developing the care plans for individuals and working out what packages of care are going to meet their needs, can I just ask about people that are fully health funded? And obviously, at that point, you are taking on the responsibility for both their health and social care needs. Can I just ask how within that process, you're unpicking and understanding the social care needs that they have? Do you draw in the specialist CHC social work team that you've mentioned that the local authority has? Or are they not involved at that point because someone's moved over to a fully funded package of care?
It fully depends. A lot of our patients have social care packages in place before they become fully funded. So in those cases, we take on the existing package from social care and then we then work with the patients to basically see what their health needs need meeting on top of the social care needs that are already part of that package. If they've had no social care involvement in the past, we can seek advice from social workers. But we mainly sort of sit and work with the families and the patients to determine what their care needs are. It is very difficult from the health and social care point of view. There are some things that still remain a responsibility of the local authority from a social care perspective that aren't sort of covered under the national framework. So where we need to, we will work jointly with the local authority.
So do you feel as though sometimes there might be gaps where people from an individual's perspective, they have particular needs, but we're caught in a space where neither the CHC package that they're being offered nor the responsibility of social care is sort of stepping in to meet those needs? Because I think from an experience perspective, we certainly have heard those kinds of examples. But from your perspective, do you see that or do you not recognise that as an issue?
I think there are occasions where it is recognised, there are occasions. And it can be, I don't know how to keep an example, where there are things like, I guess, cleaning people's gutters and things like that, which they would want the carers to do, which actually isn't part of what we provide as part of the national framework. And it's not identified.
So I suppose one case where we had, and it was a complaint, was around, this was a couple of years ago, where the individual wanted the carers to clean the property. And actually, that isn't what's under the framework, we're not allowed to commission that from the providers. So we couldn't put that as part of the package of care. They will look after the area of where the patient was. But it was asking if they could clean the other rooms within the property and that isn't something that would be commissioned through health and isn't allowed under the framework.
Thank you. Cleaning, I know, is always a contentious area, even in social care. What about things like social activities and going out of the house?
We would commission engagement in social activities and access to the community as part of the packages. And that has knock on effects on their health and wellbeing anyway, so it's positive in all aspects.
Thanks. I've got a question about fast track. So you say this tends to be end of life patients and the package of care goes in place within 72 hours. So with end of life, does the discharge to assess rule still apply? Or is it all taken care of before the patient leaves hospital?
I think it depends. So we will have people that potentially are already CHC funded that will deteriorate and will automatically move to what we call fast track. And then there will be people in the hospital that are referred through fast track for discharge and we have to respond within 24 hours and then aim to discharge out of the hospital within 72.
Just to clarify, they don't go down the discharge to assess pathway. We don't have to do an assessment on, so if the discharge to assess pathway, somebody moves out of hospital, either into their own home or to a care home for their assessment and we have to do that assessment and have an outcome within 28 days. For a patient at end of life, we don't do that assessment. We basically, we get the referral from the clinician as to their need for a fast track at their end of life and there is no assessment. We basically put the package in place. The assessment is then done three months later. If that patient is still with us three months later, we would then do the full assessment at that point.
And I mean, does it work well enough, that system? So obviously, it's a very fast turnaround and it has to be. Do you feel satisfied that that always works well for the patient? That with that pressure to discharge within a certain time and get everything in place? I mean, does everything get in place sufficiently before the person is discharged from a hospital setting?
On the whole, yes. We have contracted providers specifically for our fast track patients that will pick up the packages of care so we can get them out quickly. Some of them choose to go into nursing homes, so we would commission them to go into a nursing home instead. Some patients already have care packages in place that want to keep the care package they have and we would just take over that care package and increase it as needed. Occasionally, there can be delays getting people out of hospital on a fast track if there is a problem with care provision. But on the whole, I think that's few and far between.
Yeah, on the whole.
Does anybody want to come back in? Lucy?
Can I just come back around to the engagement, which I know you've described you want to undertake from April? I guess I've just got a slight concern really that a lot of this transformation work is already well underway. And I think, unless I misunderstood or misheard what you said, you kind of gave end of March as a sort of point at which a lot of that will be completed. So could you just say how much is still on the table really for shaping after that in terms of people's input and what we might hear if we go out and speak to people?
I suppose what we've done up to now have all been changes to internal processes. So we've changed the model, but there's been an internal process. We've changed the paperwork, that's an internal process. And actually, we've moved to some of the national performers that we should be using. So whilst, I'm not saying it doesn't need engagement, but it's been an internal process change. In terms of the, that's why we've not probably engaged with the public. We've just changed internal processes around staffing and the paperwork and a digital solution. In terms of actually how we get feedback from patients and families, that's the bit of work that we need to do. Because at the minute, we just do a questionnaire, and this is just Sheffield. Other areas might do something different. But we know that there's a gap there around feedback. But the processes that we've changed today is just being internal processes around staffing and paperwork and the systems we use. But those internal processes in turn will benefit the patients because of the less handoffs between the number of nurses that they may have previously seen.
Okay, thank you.
During the, when people's needs are changing on a non-fast track way, how long is it taking to process that? Because obviously, if you've got more time to discuss it, do we have a sort of time limit as to how long that takes?
So we regularly review, so we would go out and do a three month review once the care package is in place and then, as Dani described before, we do an annual review. If patients, families or advocates or social, anybody really, kind of contacted in the meantime to say that there's either problems or things aren't working or, you know, things have changed, then the nurses will go out and they will do a care review at that point as well. then the nurses will go out and they will do a, a care review at that point as well. If there's significant changes, um, in need, so we're usually informed either by, by the local authority, by nursing homes. Um, sometimes the families will call us themselves to say that, you know, their family members either deteriorated significantly or there's been significant changes. Um, then again, we would go out and we would do a full assessment at that time. Um, and then we would make any changes to the care package that's needed following that.
Okay, so thank you very much for answering all the questions. Um, obviously this is going to be, I think, a discussion that's more ongoing. Um, so it's been really helpful for us to understand more about the processes and the process of the transformation as well. Um, so our recommendations, um, for this item, to receive the presentation from the ICB, which we've done, um, to consider scheduling of further dedicated discussions regarding this item as part of the work programme for next municipal year to include information from the adult social care element of continuing healthcare in addition to further input from the ICB regarding the health element. Um, are members first of all happy with that recommendation? Yep. Uh, yeah, Lucy, I wanted to bring you in anyway. Um, if you've got any thoughts about what kind of timescale might be helpful and how we might go about having the further discussions?
Um, so I just, uh, was wondering about the possibility of a workshop style kind of focus on this. And actually in terms of the engagement you've got planned, that could really help and support that work. Because, um, in the style of the engagement, the workshops that we've done and other subjects, there's been quite a good buy-in from the public in terms of getting lots of different people in a room and having conversations about how it's working from different perspectives. So I just wonder whether time scale wise, whether that would work. I know we're into the next year and you want to do the engagement from April, but that seems like a logical next step to me.
So I think, I think we, we can sort of make an offer really to, um, be proactive in the patient engagement side of this and the public engagement side. And as Lucy says, it's worked quite well when we've, um, involved the public in other topics such as dentistry um, and, uh, adult ADHD pathways. We've had some really good interactions with the public. And I know that some of your colleagues in the ICB have found that very, um, enlightening as well. So, um, it's relatively easy for us to stage that and, um, to do some public engagement around that, which you might find helpful. Um, so I think that's a good next step. Are members happy to take that as our next step? Yeah? I think that's an affirmative. Danny?
Yeah, that's absolutely fine. And we'll have, I'll touch base with Katie as well and then feed in Lucy. Because I know Andrew's been having conversations, uh, because obviously this was escalated to our QP board, which is our, uh, board for quality, uh, improvement of patient safety. So we can follow that up as well.
That's great. So I think, um, because, uh, just want to highlight really the fact that you get complaints and that's a real, that's a, that's a formal system. But Health Watch stands in quite, in a different, um, you're a sort of safety net in the system, I, I perceive it, you as really. In that some people don't want to make a formal complaint or they might be nervous of doing that for some reason or don't quite have the capacity to do it. Uh, and Health Watch is a kind of accessible way of making your comments without entering into a formal complaint system. So what Health Watch, um, hears from people is really valuable. And hopefully can be a good contribution to what, to the work that you're doing.
Absolutely.
Okay, good. I think, so we've agreed a way forward. Um, and Deborah will, um, maybe discuss timescale later when we talk about the work programme. Okay. Thank you everyone. Thanks Danny and Carolyn. Okay, so item eight on the agenda is regarding Harold Street Medical Centre, uh, which is situated in Walkley Ward. Um, we have, uh, Abigail Tebbs has come from, um, the ICB to, uh, present and discuss that with us. So thank you for coming, Abby. And, um, we've received a preliminary report from you, which has been circulated uh, to members some time ago. And then you've, um, sent us a more recent report with some of the patient feedback, which I think is fascinating. So you're going to present to us on that and then take some questions. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, yes, so what we've come to talk to you about today is the results of the patient engagement that we've, the patient engagement and involvement that we've undertaken with the registered population of the practice. Just by way of background, um, Harold Street is a small, single contractor, Harold Street was a small single contractor practice in the north of the city. Um, it has a registered population of about two and a half thousand patients, uh, 2,646 at the last, um, at the last count. Um, and the population it serves, the immediate area is in the sort of second most deprived decile in England according to Index of, uh, Multiple Deprivation. It's interesting in that it's got a somewhat atypical registered population. And I think you can see some details, you'll see some details of the demographics in the report. Um, it's worth noting that the population skews quite male, sort of quite towards working age male. And we understand this to be a, a product of, um, patient choice and patient preference when a previous GP who was Arabic speaking worked at the practice. And, um, you can also see from the maps we've provided that, um, which also bears this out, I think, that, um, there's a sort of, about 50% of the population is clustered around the practice. The other 50% of the population is much more dispersed across Sheffield and actually even beyond, uh, the boundaries of Sheffield. So you've got this, it's, it's unusual in terms of the, the sort of population you'd expect to see. The previous contractor who, who was a longstanding GP working in Sheffield, um, handed his contract back, um, around 18 months ago due to ill health and has since very sadly, uh, passed away. Um, and we appointed, um, a primary care Sheffield as a caretaker, um, on a caretaker contract to, uh, maintain provision of services, uh, from the practice. Um, their current contract for that ends in June 2025, so this June. And we have been undertaking a, begun a process to, um, make a full assessment to determine, um, our future commissioning arrangements, uh, for the practice and for the population it serves. Um, I think it's worth pointing out at this point that the latest GP survey results, so that's the 2024 GP survey, does show quite a, quite a, quite a good degree, quite a high degree of satisfaction with, overall with the service offered uh, by primary care Sheffield. Um, and, um, and, and patients are, are broadly happy with, with the care and service they have been receiving under that contract. So as I said, we need to now make a decision on future commissioning arrangements. Um, and obviously patient involvement is really critical to that process. Um, we do understand that discussions around the future of any GP practice is a, is a sensitive issue. It's quite a, it's quite a hot potato. So we wanted to make our decision in a way that fully took, fully considered the views of patients and other stakeholders. Um, which is why we chose to undertake a period of involvement at, at a really formative stage in our thinking rather than, rather than coming up with, coming up with some ideas and then going out. So I think just to make it clear, we have reached, we have no conclusion um, on what we think the right answer to this is at this point. We haven't made any decisions about that. We will, we are now in a process of looking at what the long list of options, uh, might be. Um, so obviously we, we, we undertook the involvement during December and January. Um, it was done by way of questionnaire. Every registered patient at the practice was contract, contacted using their preferred contact method. Um, and we've received in total, I think, two hundred and seventy four responses. We, taking into account the, the sort of practice demographics, uh, we made the survey available in multiple languages, particularly, um, English and Arabic. And we've got ninety four responses in Arabic, uh, which we're really quite pleased about because it shows that we are, we have reached at least part of that, of, of that demographic and, and, and heard some views, some views from, from, from those individuals. Um, and I think, sorry, it was two hundred and seventy responses, not two hundred and seventy four. Um, which is 10% response rate, which actually is not bad for this type of involvement work. Um, although it's worth noting, I think that you can see that quite a, that I think the majority of responses are from those who live quite close to the practice rather than those who live, who live further away. Um, which we will obviously take into account. Um, I think the feedback, the feedback we've got, which we've set out in the report for you, um, will help us make some more informed decisions about the possible outcomes. Um, and, um, we will continue to engage both with the population of the practice and with other stakeholders. We've, we, we shared the information and our plans with key stakeholders um, to give them an opportunity to, um, to share with us any concerns or any thoughts they have. And we will continue that dialogue as we work up, we work up options. Um, what we are planning now, as I said, is to develop that long list of options. But first what we are going to do is undertake a period of market engagement um, to see, to, to, to understand who might be out there, who are, who's interested in, in taking over provision of a practice. Um, and also to see if we can stimulate that market a bit to get some more interest um, and understand any concerns or issues that they might have so that we can feed that into, into our, into our assessments and our thoughts on, on, on building up those options. So that is the next step which we'll be undertaking, which we're, which we're developing at the moment, will be undertaking in the next uh, month or six weeks. In order to support this process, we will be extending the contract we hold with the current provider of services for at least another, at, at least a further three months to ensure that we are not, um, we, we are not, uh, we're, we're giving this process the time it needs and the thought it needs rather than having to come to any rush decision about future provision.
That's great. Thanks, Abigail. I'm sure people have got a lot of questions. Uh, Laura first?
Thank you and thank you for bringing this report. Um, I'm a councillor in Walkley Ward, so where, um, Harold Street is located. Um, so I guess I'm sort of asking questions with my Walkley hat on as well as being part of this committee. Um, it's really good to hear, um, from you how, um, patient engagement has been at the heart of this process so far. And that's really, yeah, it's really positive. And like you highlighted, it's also really clear, um, from the questionnaire responses that there has been good continuity of care in this, um, process so far. So that's also excellent. So I guess my question is, um, as you look ahead to the market testing and these next steps, how are the patients in Walkley going to be kept up to date of what's going on? Are they going to be informed of the next steps or how's that going to work? What does that look like? Thank you.
Uh, thank you for that. No, I think, I think that's really important. Um, we will make patients aware of the process. We'll, we'll use the practice to communicate. Um, the, the current provider, primary care Sheffield is our local GP federation. They've got some really good track record in terms of engaging with patients here and elsewhere. So we will share the outcome of that and share the next steps through the practice. And we'll continue to do that, um, to do that as we go on.
Brilliant. That's really good to hear. And will we, will the scrutiny committee hear about the outcome? Will you come back to this?
Absolutely, yes.
Thank you so much.
Um, thank you very much for the report. It's really interesting to see the data there. Um, is it quite unusual for surgeries to have multiple languages? And because that seems to be like the feature, you know, one of the main features is like one particular language being spoken and responding to a need. And it's interesting that it's men. You know how, I know how difficult it is to get my partner to see a doctor. So, um, we're always trying to get men to go to see their GP for things, aren't we? So it feels like it's a very kind of, um, important feature. And are we, you know, should, whatever the decision is, are we looking at how we can use this good practice? Because, you know, the feedback is very positive to inform other surgeries maybe.
I think that's, um, I think that's an interesting point. Um, it isn't unusual necessarily to see a concentration of, um, one particular language. I can think of other practices in Sheffield where we have, um, pocket, where you have pockets of, of, where particular populations have chosen to, to settle. Um, I'm thinking, for, for example, of the area around, uh, Page Hall and, and, and Fervell where, where you see a lot of, uh, you, you, that, one of the key languages is Roma Slovak, is, is Roma. So, um, it's not that unusual. I think you are right that this is, that this is, um, this is, this is interesting because what you had is a male Arabic GP. So there's obviously, because that opportunity is there, I think, I think there's a, there's an element of historic patient, patient choice, but there is no longer a male Arabic speaking GP there. So, but patients have continued to remain registered at the practice. Um, we endeavour to ensure that regardless of, of, um, regardless of the, of their, of their sort of first language or language of choice, patients can access care and can access interpreting services. We commission an interpreting service for all that's accessible by all practices in, in Sheffield. Um, but yes, like, it, it's difficult. It's, it's unusual, I think, because of that, because of that preference. Uh, but we definitely have to sort of take, take any learning from that into account, as you say, or any good practice that we find there.
On the other side of that, is it possible that there's more males going to the practice than females? Because there hasn't been a female GP there. I'm just thinking of a lot of, sort of like a lot of Muslim ladies prefer to see a female GP. Um, so maybe that's what's boosted the male figures going to that GP practice. And is it something that when we're looking at the next steps? Is that something, or is it already being in the interim taken into account? And are we going to be seeing then female GPs there? Thank you.
The, the, the current service, um, the, the, the current service is, um, it is, is provided by a range of GPs. So there is, there is a greater element of choice there. Um, it is, um, it is possible that that might be the case, but that's historic. So it, it, it's, it's hard to, it's hard to say. Um, but certainly when we, if we were, if we look to commission new GP providers, one of the questions we would ask is about how you can ensure equitable access to, equitable access to service and make sure people have that element of choice.
Um, so I've got a question about the geographical, um, kind of dispersal of patients, which is also interesting. And I guess may have something to do with the, um, attraction of them being in Arabic, having been an Arabic speaking GP. Um, but just in a slightly wider context, um, this is unusual, is it, for practices in Sheffield? Or is there a pattern of that in other practices?
I think, I have, we haven't undertaken a very detailed study of the, of the, of the spread of, of patients at, at every practice. But it's, I, it is noticeable here. Um, there is, practices may Um, there is, you, practices may, if they wish, register out of area patients, um, and there, and there's guidance to practices on that. In fact, there is new guidance we're waiting for that's attached to the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six uh GP contract, which hasn't been published yet. Um, which we will have to, which we will have to consider and put into effect. Um, but I think it, it was apparent to all of us when we started looking at the mix of the population that there was something slightly different here. All practices will have an element of that vary, depending on how much they choose to, choose to allow that, or patients who have been registered for some time and have moved. But I think it was quite noticeable here.
And, and do you know um if any patients in any significant number have um registered elsewhere since um, that particular GP retired?
We haven't been made aware of any significant drift of any part of that population. It would be hard to say without asking the practice to review. We, we know that the practice list has grown slightly since Primary Care Sheffield took over. What we don't see is what you might call the churn in that list. So tha- that's a net growth. We don't see the number of patients leaving the list and the number of new patients joining the list. Um, it's a piece of work we, 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 we can ask the practice to undertake for us.
And, and has there been a female GP, um, you know, during the interim period?
Yeah.
Uh, there has been a female GP there, so that's a change.
Availability of female GP there.
So that's, that's, that's a change?
Yes.
And may account for some
It may.
Um, population change.
Without asking in detail, I, we'd be, we'd be reaching conclusions with, without a great deal of evidence, but it's possible, yeah.
And you, you've put in the report, uh, I mean, obviously you've reported on what, what people said in the involvement exercise. Um, but I think it's quite noticeable, the number of comments about, um, it would be great to see a, a future, a kind of a version of this practice in the future that would uh have more services for, for women's health and for mental health. And I thought that was really interesting that, because it's um something widely talked about, isn't it? Co-locating services and using premises to, to co- co-locate things like um sort of lower level mental health interventions. Um, and uh the fact that patients are saying that, I think is sort of doubly interesting, really. Um, have you got any particular sort of thoughts about tha- about that?
Yes, I, 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 we, we did find the, the, the comments and suggestions from patients um in- interesting and, and helpful if we're thinking about um future provision. Um, the practice is part of a primary care network. Um, it's part of Seven Hills Primary Care Network. Um, and as part of that has access uh to primary care mental health workers. But I think l- looking forward, if you were look, if, if we are looking at um commissioning a, 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 a new provider to take on that contract, um, it's um, with that additional stability, we would be looking at how, how we can work with the practice, work with the network to, to make sure the, um, there's a full range of access to those services there.
Yeah, so you would, so you would be looking to respond to those things that patients have said, yeah?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, that's really encouraging, good. Any other questions at this stage? I'm just going to check my own, my own notes. I've asked everything I wanted to. Um, I think it's really heartening to see, you know, how the patient involvement has been taken up and that, you know, I guess historically, maybe people are a bit circumspect about consultations, aren't they? And think everything's a foregone conclusion. But I think the engagement that you've had here indicates that people don't think that, which is really healthy. So I guess thank you for that. And um, I think we probably also want to extend thanks to Primary Care Sheffield for stepping in, um, which can't have been easy, and providing that continuity of care for patients. Um, which is, is really a credit to Sheffield, I think, isn't it, how that's been able to happen? Um, I, I did just have a question about um sort of looking more widely at, at provision uh with the emerging local plan in mind as well, and I'm sure there are discussions around that. Um, and whether, um, I, I think it is of interest to this committee really, to, to kind of be appraised of that, that kind of discussion. So we're expecting population growth. We've already had population growth. Um, I think Calum Island Deep Send is one area to look at in particular and potential patient cohort for that area of extending up to Walkley. Um, so I think maybe we'd be interested to hear a little bit about how you're approaching that um in the wider context of general practice provision. Um, because obviously the, the local plan is, you know, still a really hot issue for us as a council. Uh, and I think we're keen to see um how, how bits of it, like health provision, are going to work. Do you think that's something you could uh engage with us about at some point?
Yes, I'm sure we could. Um, given, um, given the fact that we are at the moment undertaking a piece of work with primary care networks across South Yorkshire to support them to produce uh network level plans. Um, and we've just completed a, a, an ICB level infrastructure plan. Um, we have a strategic estates group in Sheffield that includes the ICB, uh, the uh other NHS bodies, so the acute trust, for example, a local authority and, and others. Um, and yeah, I think um it would be a good opportunity to come and talk to you about where that thinking is. Um, um, and what we think some of the priorities are for, for Sheffield.
Thank you. Any final questions or comments? Okay. Abigail, thank you ever so much. It's a really heartening piece of work, and so we look forward to hearing about the next stage. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Um, that's the right bit in my script. Uh, our recommendation on that item is simply to consider the results of the Harold Street patient involvement. So we're happy that we've done that. Are there any suggestions for a next step on that item? Laura?
I guess it comes back at the point at which the ma- the market testing's been completed and there's that list of possible next steps that would be really helpful to hear.
Eyes on that. So we'll hear back about the market testing stage. That's what you're expecting, Abigail, yeah?
Yeah.
Okay.
It might be helpful for us to, to do that number of market testing, not have a long list, to say that you would consider those options.
Yeah, so to come back with a long list of options. Brilliant, yeah. Thank you. Okay. Yeah, okay, thanks. So um we're in um Abigail's hands as regards to timescale on that, but we'll hear from you in due course. Thank you. Lovely, thank you. Okay, so members, we're on to item nine, which is the work programme. I'm going to hand over to Deborah to talk us through that part.
Thank you, Chair. Um, okay, so the um, the work programme report contains, um, obviously this is the last meeting for this year, so the main area focus um is the um appendix, which includes uh the items which the uh committee have agreed to consider, but haven't actually been allocated to a meeting yet um this year. Um, and I guess the decision is really whether we want to uh carry all of those um agenda items over into the uh next year's work programme. We have, we have a commitment to do the work, winter plan twice in the new, uh, in the new work programme. So that would be, um, I think when it was discussed at the last meeting, um, uh, it was agreed that the winter plan would come in September and then again in March in terms of evaluating how it was implemented um and any recommendations moving forward. So that, um, we are committed to including that. Um, the uh long COVID, you'll notice I'm going backwards up the table. I don't know why I've decided to do it that way, but anyway. So the long COVID item was due to come to this meeting, um, but had to be deferred, um, which wasn't necessarily a bad thing because there were two quite substantial items on the agenda anyway. So that, um, members need to decide if they want that carrying forward to uh next year. Um, the future of health services for adults with a learning disability is an update. Um, members will recall that you've had a number of reports on that. Um, and that's probably going to be the final report in terms of update of how that uh new plan um is being implemented. Continence Services, again, uh, I expect that to be a closure report. Um, there was a scrutiny review done on that going back two or three years now. Um, and I have managed to meet with the relevant colleagues from the teaching hospital. And um they will be providing us with a full report against the original scrutiny report. Bearing in mind that some of that won't have been achieved direct, um, directly in the wording of the actual scrutiny review, because obviously it's a kind of, it's fairly outdated piece of work now. And also we had um a COVID and the pandemic intervening during that period. So um that, that will bring members up to speed and hopefully close that scrutiny review. Uh, there was a request to look at children's autism, autism and ADHD pathways on the back of the work that we've done on adult autism and ADHD. Um, the two workshops there, the mental health interventions and primary care workshops are workshops that have been on the work programme for over twelve months now. And we haven't managed to get um those scheduled yet. Bearing in mind what was just discussed with Abigail about potential work on the work programme i- in terms of the primary care networks, um, it might be that um that could be m- managed within a, an item on an agenda. We've also um agreed um to include a specific meeting dedicated to equalities monitoring uh based on Council Mallon's uh member questions. So that's where we are with the, the work programme as it is evolving for next year. Um, and I'll, I welcome any questions or views about how that should be developed.
So just to note then that we're um, we're requesting a follow-up workshop for the CHC um to be added on. And then, so we'll have follow-up to the Harold Street surgery item, but the timescale for that is um not fully known until Abigail comes back with her next report. So they both need to be noted. Um, what do members think about um requesting a briefing from the ICB um on the work they've been doing around population growth and um working in with the local plan?
Um, could I suggest also that when they know what's happening, that we also request something about what the kind of scrapping of NHS England, what the impact is on Sheffield in terms of how it's going to be reorganised? It might be for later in the year. But, yeah, but it would be interesting to see how that evolves and, you know, have a lucker firm point where we can ask how the reorganisation will impact patients in Sheffield.
Can we note that, Deborah, for, just keep it on the long list?
Yeah.
For when it becomes timely. Um, so a brief, a briefing on the um catering for the population growth in Sheffield? Do we, do we want to hear from the ICB on that? Show of hands, yes, well, yes? Yeah, okay. We'll, we'll add that on. Thank you, Deborah. Just a, a members briefing will suffice on that, I think. Mick?
I think we have to be reassured that it's on somebody's radar, that if we are talking about more people, then we need the infrastructure, my favourite word at the moment, infrastructure to deal with that. Uh, but I'm just, I'm not trying to put words in Toby's mouth, but I'm a so, is it, were the questions that he asked related in any way to the Equality Commission that we set up? And whether or not those, that they were cross-referenced to what the um aims of the Equality Commission were, were, or the recommendations were, and whether or not they've actually applied them. I, I, I may be making something up here that he, what he didn't mean.
I, I think, no, not directly. They weren't directly questioning about the Race Equality Commission, but it is about equalities. Andrew, have you got more information?
I have the question and I actually have the response letter because he's shared it with me. Um, so they were very specific about, sorry, I want to be you today. Um, uh, they're very specific regarding um neurodiversity and how the various hospitals cater for them and how um women are granted treatment for certain um treatments compared to men with very specific, you know, female conditions and including um you know, sterilisation, um, et cetera. So they're very specific ADI questions.
Something into that that wasn't there. I do apologise for that.
Um, okay, any other comments on the work programme at this point? Okay, so thanks to Deborah. I think we've got everything noted down that we've added on today. Um, and uh obviously there's going to be a bit of a hiatus around uh the, the council AGM time. Um, and we don't know which members will sit on this subcommittee um in the next year, so. Uh, are, are there any of these things we want to try and fit in before, before May? Um, that briefing around the local plan is, would it be useful to have that sooner rather than later? I, I mean, I'm going to suggest sooner rather than later. If we can timetable it.
Might be helpful to have it before we hear about Havel Street again, so yeah.
Yeah, it does, it obviously ties in with the Harold Street item, doesn't it? So if we could try for that before, um, before May?
Yeah.
Deborah, that would be useful. Thank you. Okay, uh, right, I think we are at the end of our agenda, so just to say that, oh, no, actually, sorry. A thought occurred to me while we were talking about the long COVID. Uh, Angela, um, the next Health and Wellbeing Board on the twenty-seventh has long COVID as an item. Um, have you had any information about that item yet? Is, is there, is there information there that could be useful to members of the subcommittee? Bearing in mind that we had asked for a briefing on this, on the long, long COVID hub uh in Sheffield, and it's been delayed for us.
Yeah, definitely, there is information there. The report, I believe, has been published um yesterday, I believe. So that would be a good starting point for you. And you're very welcome to come and, uh, it's next Thursday morning, but um it'll be webcast, so people can always, it's a, we're having a longish discussion. We've allocated, I think, about half an hour to it, which is a lot for us because we have loads of items.
We've had quite a few public questions come in on it as well in the last couple of days.
Yeah, so it might be useful if you can't come um to um watch the, so at least you have some information from that, and then you can take that as a starting point for whatever you want to ask further.
Is, is it likely that you'll follow that up on the Health and Wellbeing Board, or is that just a briefing?
No, we probably, there'll be some actions linked to it.
So I think if um, if we can task ourselves with watching that item in, on the webcast or afterwards, uh, and taking that as a starting point, and then we can consider how, how, if or how we want to continue that in this subcommittee. Does that sound like the right approach, Angela? Because I, I don't, I haven't read the report yet for next week.
Um, definitely. Would I do, I'll ask, um, whoever, if it's Eleanor or me, I'll, I'll ask which minute you have to go to, so you don't have to listen to the whole thing to find the right place.
Okay, that's really helpful, thanks. Um, so that gives, that gives us something at least on that item, doesn't it? Okay, thank you very much, everybody. Next meeting of the Health Scrutiny Subcommittee is to be confirmed at the council AGM in May. Watch that space. Thank you very much.